From a committee to a coalition. So it's the same acronym, just a different word at the end. And it's a 12-member coalition. And the meetings have since then, we've had several subcommittee meetings as far as planning and getting organized for the public kickoff meeting, which we held our first public kickoff meeting. August 6th, where approximately 50 attendees were here to be involved in the meeting as well. And based on that meeting, there was consensus around the winter solutions and a scaled-down pilot option. So I'll talk more about that here in the following slides. So some challenges in regards to the navigation center development is the type of model we're looking at and exploring. The emergency shelter model versus the interim housing model. You know, the shelter model is basically where an individual can check in for the night and then have to vacate in the morning, something more traditional that we're probably most used to hearing. The interim housing is more of a longer-term housing model that allows folks to stay in there longer term in order to basically move through that program to more supportive housing beyond that. And there are some funding challenges with both models that we are coming to realize. Location consideration is a big thing. We still haven't been able to locate a location to house this type of, house either one of these models at this point. And we're using some of the community, obviously, a lot of the community output to drive that decision. And so based on when we met with you to talk about the homeless action plan and a full-scale navigation center, which you directed staff to start focusing toward, it's unlikely at this point that we're going to have something up and running before the winter of 2025 in regards to that larger-scale solution that we were talking about earlier. So the proposed Pilot Navigation Center is a concept of a one-year pilot facility with reduced capacity. In the action plan, it talks about, you know, up to 20, 25 beds that would be available. This would be a reduced capacity. And with that reduced capacity comes with reduced cost as well. And the idea is that this would be open 24/7 and provide continuous services to where folks can go there to get some navigation services, whether that's getting a driver's license, being able to register for mail at the post office, those types of behavior health-type stuff as well. And so we're still targeting at this date to open said center at December 1st, which is, you know, it's the end of August already. So we're getting crunched for time. So time is of the essence. Looking back at the original action plan that we had, it called out potentially $1.2 million in funding requirements for those 22-plus beds. This revised concept that we're looking at to pilot for one year would roughly be about half of that at $500,000, although it'd be significantly reduced in capacity. So we're working through those challenges now. And funding commitments remain outstanding. We're still trying to figure out funding opportunities in order to meet the need of the community as well as the model. So like I said, the emergency overnight model, like I said, is, you know, basically someone checking in in the evening and then having to vacate in the morning. And so that is helpful in a sense that it gets people out of the weather, gives them shelter. And it's also a place for hospital discharge recovery for folks that don't have anywhere to go, that are being discharged from the hospital. And it's, you know, it's a short-term emergency shelter. In the interim housing model, it's, like I said, a longer-term stability, and it's a structured pathway to permanent housing. And so when we're talking about funding opportunities, the county is able to get funding for an interim housing model, but we're not able to get funding for an emergency overnight shelter model. And so we're still trying to identify different ways to accomplish that. And right now, we're still in the exploratory stage and trying to find those resources. The next steps is, our next public TEAC meeting is September 4th here at 10:30 a.m. It's going to be obviously open to the public, and it'll be in-person and remote access. And just some proposed agenda topics that we're round tabling now is defining the service population, obviously, the facility scope and location, which is a big one, the funding framework for the pilot, which is also another big one, and then the operator RFP process. So I've got that asterisk there. If you recall, the county did an RFP for a shelter-type model in the past to try to get a provider to come in and run a shelter. And they had zero interest from any of the providers that are in our region. And a lot of that, I think, was because it was weather-triggered, and it's really hard to run a model that's weather-triggered when you have employees, and it's all dependent on weather. So there's discussions internally about possibly putting out another RFP process to highlight that this would be a 24/7-type operation and see if there's the ability to co-mingle the shelter operation and the interim housing operation. So a lot more work to be done there. And projected opening timeline is still on the list to talk about. So obviously, that was a super-high-level overview. I'll be happy to take any questions after the town manager's report.
Thank you, chief. Now to item 5.2.
Okay, we play some musical chairs here. I just have two announcements, some exciting community events that are happening. Sorry, let me turn over. Coming up on September 12th is our Dark Skies reception. We'll be hosting it this year at the medical office building across from the hospital, where the pharmacy is down on the lower floor, and that is in partnership with Nevada City. So their Public Art Commission is going to be in town that day as well, hosting a joint meeting with our Public Art Commission, doing a tour of our public art, and then participating in the Dark Skies reception. So that's from 6:30 to 8 o'clock on Friday night, September 12th. So we hope everybody can come out and see who is taking away the prizes for the Dark Sky photo competition, but more so helping spread the word about dark skies and the importance of dark skies. And then next, we are trying something new this year. We are excited to bring a community block party, September 18th. It will be located down along Commercial Row in the depot area in the parking lot there. We'll have food trucks, live performances, some dance performances, some live art happening, raffles, and this is all, many of our nonprofits and our partner agencies are joining the table for information. We have over 40 tables at this point. There's no crafts for sale, that type of thing, but interactive information resource today, and we hope people will come down, support local businesses. We have some food trucks, you can buy some food or go into one of the restaurants. It should be a fun event for everybody. We look forward to that happening very soon. And that's all my report tonight.
Thank you, Jen. And now, do any council members have any comments or questions? Okay, Councilmember Paul.
Sorry, my microphone was stuck. Yeah, chief, thank you for that update on what's happening with TEAC. Appreciate that. It sounds like you have a location in mind?
No, there has not been an identified location.
Got it. So what are we putting out an RFP for?
So that part of that might be a location. And so the community feedback that we got, everything's, yeah, it's very fluid right now.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah, maybe a little bit of context. There's been, based on the adoption of the action plan, we heard a lot of feedback during that conversation. We had the community event. The coalition members and the chairs have taken that feedback and have tried to use that to generally narrow down areas that might meet some of the feedback we heard, kind of the gateway corridors, one of those areas. But we have not gotten to the conversation with the community yet about identifying specific sites. And then it's a chicken and an egg, because we also don't have a provider at the moment. So we're trying to balance that. We thought it was important to just give an update on where we're at. Winter's coming very soon, and at this point, the model that looks like it's the most viable is perhaps different than what was perceived to be the direction we were moving towards based on the action plan. Just slightly nuanced, maybe is a better way to say that.
Yeah, it's a really tough issue, and thanks for continuing to work on it. And I think you're our representative on that committee. Yeah.
So, thank you.
Thanks for the update. No further questions.
Yeah, yeah, both Danny and Jen have been very much involved, along with me. Okay, and now it's time for any public comments on either of the presentations. Anyone liking to make a public comment, please just come up to the podium. You'll have three minutes. Address your comments to the council. And I think, do we have a clock running, sir? And there's a button there that you push to turn the mic on.
I won't take more than three minutes. My name's Teresa Johnston. I've actually addressed you guys once before about the homeless situation. When I first started volunteering for the homeless program here in town, we were at the Veterans Hall, and it worked fantastic. And it could still work fantastic. I know it's been shut down, but it's very sparsely populated up there. And I think, I think now the council realizes there's no perfect place for anything. It's never going to be the long-term solution to the homeless situation here, but it's certainly going to save lives this winter. It's a great building. It worked perfectly before. We can do case management there. We can do emergency, you know, overnight sheltering. We can do, you know, the whole day navigations program. It worked great there once before. I know there was pushback by a few of the neighbors, but again, we don't have any other options. And especially now, I mean, there is a great option right now. There's the home center that's right across from the fire station downtown, kind of by the high school. But it has to be purchased, and nobody has anything in their budget this year to buy anything. And nobody wants to lease to the homeless program. And we already have the Veterans Hall sitting there, being very sparsely used, and we have a very needy population. And it just seems like an easy solution. And I know a few people will be unhappy, but it could save lives.
Okay, anyone else wishing to make a public comment? If there's any additional people who would like to make a public comment, could you go over and stand by the wall so we can just move through the comments a little more quickly?
Hello, my name's Dave. Basically, I'm rooting for the chief and Jen, mayor. I want to see you successful. Also, the Veterans Hall, what Teresa just talked about, I want to see those things work. I want to also ask that you please consider, just as an alternative, just in case things don't work. There are five things that the homeless need, all right? That would be lockers, so that you don't have to haul all your stuff around. Charge banks, so that you can charge your cell phone. Showers, see that you're presentable, you're clean. Porta-potties, and I would love to see the trailer type, where, you know, it's a little bit warmer, it's cleaner. And then the, sorry, I lost track of my own thing. Well, that should be five. Anyway, the other two items that are not on the list, mailing address, and which I think we're already addressing, and support services, you know, crisis intervention. The, I would love to see it spread around town. So rather than everything coalesced in just one little small group or one area, share it right here at the town, at the town center here. Could you take, and I'm asking you this, you don't need to answer, I don't expect one, but could you take the cell phone charging or the lockers? And having it spread around town with Tark Connect, you can get from place to place. A little inconvenient, but it's just an option. And like I said, just consider the options that you could spread this throughout the entire town. Now, the one thing that it doesn't address is shelter when it's really cold. So in order to address that, talk to, like, I know Wagon Wheel, they were opening up during storms where the freeway was closed. Perhaps there, at Best Western, some of the other places, their lobbies, you know, staying indoors. And if the police can direct people there, that's great. However, they have to make the commitment, they got to go back and check just to make sure that if any of the police or any of the homeless are disruptive, that they're removed. You can't stay here. If you're going to be a problem, you can't do that. But most of them don't want to be disruptive. And then the last part, and I think it's rather key, are the support services. And I can't talk to that as well as Brody can, so I'll throw him under the bus. Anyway, thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rea. Okay, I don't see any more.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Sorry, just, and I apologize, chief, just, you were saying there is a potential that maybe an interim model with some emergency beds is a potential option, or?
There's, I don't want to say that there's a potential, there could be. Anything's possible with money, right? I mean, it comes down to who's going to manage and run the facility, because they're two different models, and the same person or the same group does not run both models at the same time. So that's the struggle that we're running into. And so if we just did the interim housing, then we have a provider that would do that, but that doesn't account for any type of emergency sheltering.
Appreciate that. And I think you both said it, and, you know, we did hear from the community, interest in an emergency shelter and a place where people can go. So I know it sounds like a challenge, and I would say keep working. I think that is something we heard from our community.
Can I also add something quickly? Just a comment on the Veteran Center and Park and Rec Center as well. So that's not a property that the town has any control over. It's a park and rec facility, and I highly, highly encourage you to be attending their meetings and making that exact same public comment, because they're the ones who would provide that authority and opportunity, basically, as we were to move that forward. And I'll reserve something else for council updates on this topic as well, just to bring it back full circle potentially. But just so you all know, the Veterans Building is a park and rec facility.
Thank you. Okay, so now we'll move on to the consent items. We have nine consent items, and I'll just run them through them. They're non-controversial items. And we'll start with item 6.1, which is the minutes for the August 12th, 2025 closed session. 6.2 is adoption of the 2025 Title VI compliance plan under the Civil Rights Act of 1964. 6.3, approval of a side letter with the Truckee Police Officers Association for the extension of on-call pay to the detective sergeant. 6.4 is the Marx zoning map amendment and lot line adjustment for John and Romy Marx at 10-441 and 10-449 Somerset Drive. 6.5 is a state of good repair project proposal and authorization to execute associated sub-recipient agreement for fiscal year 2025-26. 6.6 is the resolution supporting public lands. 6.7 is the contract award for 2025 roadway vegetation management project. 6.8 is the selection of voting delegate for League of California Cities, our own council member, Lindsay Romek. 6.9 is board member appointment to the Truckee North Tahoe Transportation Management Association, which would be Alfred Knotts replacing Dan Wilkins. Does anyone wish to pull any items from the consent calendar? Does anyone on council wish to pull an item?
I don't know who asked the question, but did we want to pull 6.6, just so we could update that vocabulary that staff suggested?
Was that like Courtney?
Yeah. Oh, you asked that?
Yeah.
Did you want to pull 6.6?
Yeah.
Okay, let's pull 6.6.
Okay. Okay, are there any other items the council wants to pull? Okay, are there any items staff would like to pull?
We'd like to pull 6.7, a contract award for the roadway vegetation management project to update language in that.
Okay. And now, is there anyone in the audience who would like to pull a consent item? Seen none others. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of items 6.6 and 6.7?
I will move, we approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No passes unanimously among the four of us who are here. Okay, let's go to 6.6. That's the resolution supporting public lands. There's at least two of us here who are ready to vote to approve it with the new language. So.
Mayor, could you repeat the proposed language for the community?
The language would be, whereas Truckee Calif, well, the proposed language is adding the federal public lands that surround the town. So with that in mind, the full language would be, whereas Truckee, California is largely surrounded by federal public land, and then the rest of the sentence is the same as in the original, and federal lands comprise 8.4% of the town's land area. These public lands are integral to the community's economy, environment, and quality of life, on and on and on.
I move that we amend the letter as stated.
We'll just allow a minute for public comment.
Well, first, I have to second.
We need a second.
Oh, yeah, public comment.
Okay. Is there any public comment? Seen none, bringing it back to council, we have a motion.
And I'll second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No passes unanimously. Okay, let's go to 6.7. Who wants to take that over?
Good evening, council. My name is Slater Stewart. I'm an assistant engineer with the town of Truckee. I have a couple revisions to my staff report for the contract award for the 2025 vegetation management project. I encapsulated each revision in two slides. So the first revision is to remove recommended action number four. I have the recommended action up on the screen there. I'll say, historically, the vegetation removal project has evoked some concern among residents who object to the work for various reasons, one of them being the removal of trees in front of their house in between the roadway. And during previous projects, like these complaints, the complainants were encouraged to work with town staff to reach a resolution. And this process would look like filing a complaint with the project manager, and then it would be escalated to the division head and the department head, and ultimately, the town manager. And we worked pretty well at resolving those disputes at a staff level. So acknowledging the high volume of public feedback historically evoked by the project, the original staff report included a recommended action that would establish the town manager as the highest appeal authority, so as to not overwhelm council with project-related grievances. However, after further review of this recommended action, we determined that we cannot establish a separate appeals process without doing a formal amendment to the municipal code. So we're going to remove this recommended action. We're also removing the last paragraph from the discussion section, which was related to recommended action number four. So we recommend that the project move forward with any, without any amendments or to the formal appeals process, as it is currently outlined in the adopted municipal code, and will continue to encourage residents to work with town staff to resolve any complaints that may arise during the project.
There, any council questions, beginning with Councilmember Romek?
No questions.
Councilmember Paul. Vice Mayor Klove, stud. I have none. Are there any public comments on this item? Seen none, council deliberation, or do we want to go right to a motion? Let's go to a motion.
I make a motion that we approve per the changes that staff brought up just now.
And I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Now we can move on to discussion items.
I would like to point out, you see that Slater has a PE next to his name, and that is a new certification, he just passed his exam.
Thank you. Congratulations, Slater. Okay, item 7.1 is going to be continued to a later date to be determined, and so we'll move on to item 7.2. This will be the e-bike share pilot program led by our new representative to the North Tahoe Truckee Transportation Management Association.
That's an esteemed title.
And also our new Assistant Public Works Director.
Oh, that too, that too.
When did that happen? We didn't hear about that.
It was breaking news.
We're announcing it on the 9th.
Oh, congratulations.
Thank you. All right. See if I'm qualified to run a PowerPoint. All right. Good evening, Your Honor, members of town council, Alfred Knotts, Assistant Public Works Director, and here to give you an update and seek direction on item 7.2, which is the e-bike share pilot program that we launched a couple of years ago, and we'll get through some background on that. So I do want to put the recommended action up front, because there's a lot of information in the staff report, and there's a lot of information that we'll go through again here today, but wanted to provide an update on the overall pilot program. We've been doing that every year, a little bit later at the conclusion of the season, but this is the last year of a pilot, and we'll get into that. So we wanted to get before you a little sooner than that. We also are seeking recommendation to direct staff to issue a new RFP for an e-bike share in the town, but also to direct staff to develop and return to council with a funding plan to maintain the program through the 2026 season, which would be next summer. So we'll get into some more of those details. So why e-bike share? This program aligns with council priorities, supports implementation of the following plans, our general plan, mobility element specifically, our downtown parking action plan, it's called in there. Bike share can reduce some parking demand in certain areas. It's also called on our short-range transit plan as a tool and a mechanism to facilitate first-mile-last-mile trips in rural communities, which we are designated. Those first-mile-last-miles tend to be almost sometimes three to four miles, gaps within our system. So also serves as a viable alternative to the personal automobile for short trips especially, increases accessibility and mobility for zero-car households, which we do have quite a bit here. Again, provides that first-mile-last-mile connection, makes Truckee a more bikeable and walkable community, which is compliments, and then has become an important component of our overall multimodal transportation system in our community. So again, I've used this figure on the right here several times to kind of highlight, you know, we don't have a silver bullet in our transportation program to solve all of our congestion and mobility issues. It is, does require a suite of policies, programs, and services, and this being one of those. So I do want to just highlight the procurement process. I know that's a very exciting part of the project, but it is very important, and I wanted to just highlight how we got here, especially since we're talking about a new RFP. But the RFP was issued in 2021, not long after I started. We started this momentum and initiative as long as, along with Tark Connect around the same time. The desire was for the program to be self-sustaining, so we did call that out in the RFP. There were options to provide, you know, different business models and operating models. Some of them could have been sponsorship, some could be subsidy. The one we did receive from B-Cycle, BTS, did not require subsidy. So we, they also had a lot of other beneficial attributes, proven experience in areas. So through that process, we did get a variety of different RFPs, but we did land on B-Cycle as our preferred vendor. That was vetted through a committee we established, which can That was vetted through a committee we established, which consisted of council member, a planning commissioner at the time, some folks from our engineering division, our Keep Truckee Green Division, also our partners in Nevada County as well as Placer County. Again, as we went through the interview process, we did interview three through the process of evaluation. One of them now is out of business. Those were the, that was the other docked vendor that did come in second. But again, we did arrive at B-Cycle, which at the time was a subsidiary of Trek, but now they've been purchased through bicycle transit systems. So if you do see that referred to as BTS, that is why as well. As subsequently, after the arriving a successful vendor, we did enter into a right-of-entry agreement, so I just wanted to highlight that because we do not have a professional services agreement. There has been no financial compensation provided, so the way that we did arrive at B-Cycle being able to operate in the right of way was a right-of-entry agreement. That way, we didn't have a bunch of other bike share businesses, not that they're beating down the door to come in to Truckee, but if they didn't get that contract, we did want to make sure that we had exclusive right to operate with B-Cycle. And we've also provided them a lease agreement for space over at Riverview to help facilitate the program as well. System overview, we did not, just to go back real quick, that was 2021. We did not launch in 2022 as we had planned because of supply chain issues. So 2023, 2024, and 2025 are our three years that we'll be talking about. The RFP did call out for 50 bikes and 100 stations, so we have roughly about that out there. We've pulled in a few different bikes and added a docking station here or there. Sorry, the docks are referred to as standalone dock, and the stations are a hub themselves. So if you see five or six bikes in one location, that is considered a station or a hub. So in addition to the, kind of the spatial analysis here, geospatial analysis of where the stations are, here is a GPS tracking of where the bikes tend to travel to, to and from, line weight being where people are traveling more often, more frequently. As you can see over to the bottom right-hand corner, we do see some people venture out to North Star. Obviously, people are up in Tyler Donner, and then people look like they're venturing up to Donner Summit, too, so you got to give them up to that. Trips by week, so this is a snapshot over the extended period of the whole program. The green bar is 2023, the black or dark-colored bar is 2024, and 2025 is the furthest one to the right, which is the orange reddish. As you can see, we can see some good trends here, some positive trends, especially during some of our peak times, which we've been advertising as we have these peak events, whether it be Fourth of July, we know it's going to be a busy weekend. We've been pushing things out through social media to really kind of drive behavioral change, or even just, you know, decide when you decide to travel, but also how you travel. So we'd like to think that we've been effective in that sense by not only promoting things, but obviously providing the options and alternatives. But in 2025 year-to-date, we are about 3.4,000 trips. That's about 21,000 miles. We've used that statistic of that traversing, that's traversing the United States about seven times, so just to give people kind of a snapshot of that. Our carbon offset, it equates to about one pound per mile ridden is the calculation, and this data does come from B-Cycle themselves. Since our launch, we're just over about 11,000 trips, about 72,000 miles. And again, kind of that one-to-one offset, it's a little bit less, so as you see that number go up, the carbon offset's a little bit different. But again, pretty good numbers, and one thing to highlight here is that we are a seasonal system, and if I'm not mistaken, and we do have some B-Cycle representatives here in the audience as well that have traveled as far as Wisconsin to be here today. But it is, I believe, their only seasonal system as well, so that does, that have you taken in a real system is also for physical and mental health. Real system is also for physical and mental health as well, and people just getting out to ride a bike, which is a good thing as well. Satisfaction, the satisfaction of the vendor in our system operating in the community has been very favorable, and looking at how people refer to the system as well, again, additional high marks in that realm as well. So our recap, just real quick of, you know, where is the program? How did we get here? Again, another thing I would like to highlight is just the seasonality of it. So essentially, we're almost at about a one year of a real operating season over the course of three seasons. So we're in our third year of a pilot commitment. Again, this has just been a commitment. We have no binding contract for them to be here. They've been here, very, very good partners, and very good partners through the transition of their acquisition to a different parent company. User adoption has been slower for a seasonal system. I think we've seen that, and we've seen those numbers kind of tick up even at the end of the season. We've seen, you know, when visitation does go down, that those numbers have been a little stronger towards the end of the season. People start to see it more, they start to become more familiar with it. We do see value in it environmentally, socially, and economically in the continuation of the program, so that's what we're here to discuss tonight. We don't want to risk discontinuation of the program, so that's why we're looking at the RFP hybrid kind of recommendation to continue the program, but also issue a new RFP. Again, this fits into our overall goal of a comprehensive multimodal transportation system. So when we think of things like our van pool program that we just got funding for, that we're getting ready to launch and build up, having a bicycle share system or even TART Connect really, really drives people to that. They know they can get around once they get up here, get to work, and have alternatives. So it's nice to have that piece of the puzzle. But we do see, you know, an opportunity for request proposal. Things have changed out in the marketplace, but also some of our partners have also been expressing interest in joining in the program as well, whether they be local partners or regional partners. So also just to kind of see what's out there. So that's what you'll see, kind of why this recommendation is a hybrid approach. So we did lay out all these different, five different options. So option one is to issue a new RFP for a system operator and operating model, so that could be a subsidy required, no subsidy, it could be a third party. Option two is to continue the program into 2026 with BTS B-Cycle with the town and/or a partner sponsorship. These other options are things to still consider down the line, or even obviously tonight. But option three is the town could purchase the depreciated equipment. Some of those numbers are in the staff report, but that number is about $300,000 to purchase the equipment outright. That would require hiring seasonal staff to operate the program, and we would still have to pay an annual software fee to B-Cycle, which is approximately $25,000 a year. Option four would be purchase depreciated equipment, but also solicit RFP for a third-party to operate. So that could be a bike shop that would want to come in and operate it. It could be a 501(c)(3), such as Truckee Trails Foundation, or anybody that might even come in from the outside. Maybe it's Lake Tyler Bicycle Coalition that wants to get into this type of activity. So that's something we would look to actually blend into this new RFP also. So that's kind of a hybrid on top of the hybrid approach. But also, there's an option just to discontinue the program as well, which would be an option five. Our recommended action is to direct staff to issue a new RFP, but at the same time, we would look to negotiate with B-Cycle and come back to town council with a funding plan to do that, to continue the program into 2026, but run these kind of parallel and concurrent processes, if you will. And that is the end of my report for presentation.
Thank you, Alfred. Okay, we'll start with clarifying questions from the council. We'll start with Councilmember Paul Ovee. Councilmember Romek.
Yeah, thank you. I know a fellow council member asked a question around increase in ridership that would be required in order for the e-bike program to become profitable, and it was four to five times ridership over the existing was what the answer was. Along those same lines, you know, we saw those lines, or riders going into Martis Valley and North Star and going into Placer County. If this were to expand into neighboring jurisdictions like Placer County, do we think there would be a potential to see an increase in ridership that could help with some of that delta? Have you considered that or talked about that?
Yes, I do believe we are hampered by the limitations of the system right now. The fact that we're not necessarily into the neighborhoods, I think, is also not really driving a lot of that first-mile-last-mile ridership, but also getting out to those destinations out in the Martis Valley area, up to North Star, and being able to get into those areas, I think, would be very, very beneficial in driving ridership.
Great, thank you. That's my only question right now.
Vice Mayor Klovstod?
Yeah, I have a couple, thank you. And thank you for joining us this evening. So it's a seasonal program, obviously because we have snow here. What are the risks and or downsides of potentially leaving these stations out, maybe not year-round, but longer?
So the, do you mind if I answer that now?
Please.
Okay. So the risk would be, and the reason we pull a lot of these out in the system I operated before at a different jurisdiction was the same reason as, you know, snow removal, ADA access starts becoming a little more difficult because of those structures, if you will, being in place. But that is something Becky and I were just talking about, you know, in the wintertime, is there an opportunity to keep kind of this spine system where you do have the Glen Shire, where you have the Donner Lake, and then everybody's just, you know, they're trying to get downtown, you know? We're not trying to get other people to these other areas. So there's, it doesn't preclude that right now, so.
Because we do have a lot of nice temperate days where you could, and people do ride their bikes all winter long, just not every day.
Correct.
So have, have you had conversations with B-Cycle about what ways we could make it profitable without actually running the program ourselves? And I'm thinking things like purchasing equipment or other types of support by our staff or equipment?
You know, we do have a, we give a very good discount over at Riverview as of right now. Also, for those folks, that does bring down that cost pretty significantly for them. I think, you know, not something that you just mentioned, but a sponsorship would go a long way in being able to kind of close that delta, if you will, on what the cost, operating cost is. Other things that we've looked at, I don't know if Brian wants to speak to anything else, Brian Conger from B-Cycle, but, you know, we've looked at most of the things that we've done by providing Riverview, even providing utilities over there at a pretty reasonable cost also, but we haven't identified any other significant cost reductions at this point.
If the mayor is willing, I'd love to hear from Brian.
I was wondering if you could just come on up and maybe permanently station yourself there so that council could ask you questions or just check to see if Alfred's right or not.
You hear me all right? Absolutely. Brian Conger with B-Cycle. Thanks so much for the opportunity to be here. So the question, I think, was about, might there be an opportunity to bring down costs in other ways? So just looking at our overall expenses, I do things on a per-bike basis. So our operating expenses, we have 55 bikes. It's about $4,000 a bike a year to operate. When we look at those expenses, if you look at our local staffing, so we have our two local staff members here, Eli and Sawyer here, with Eli and Sawyer, and then also the support that we have from our central team that provides customer service, kind of our HR, kind of admin support, that roughly is about 45% of our overall operating expense in those two buckets. The next biggest expense that hits our kind of accounting budget is our depreciation. So the cost of the equipment, that was all financed by B-Cycle. That's about 36% of our overall kind of operating, you know, budget as a depreciation line item. Beyond that, we get into kind of smaller things like admin IT costs, that's about 8% of our overall budget, and then vehicle, we have a service vehicle, and then just the parts for replacement on the bikes. That's kind of stuff that we, you know, need to have. We did experiment this year, because we closed on seasonally, the first kind of season that we closed, we left our leased vehicle here, but we did relocate that this past winter to try and bring down costs. We were using that in our Santa Barbara location, and that helped us kind of spread that cost out when it wasn't being used. That is kind of one of those fixed costs, if, you know, we might not always have that demand in another market. So, you know, vehicle cost is just something you have to have to operate the system, and it goes unused for at least half the year here. And then insurance, that's about 3% of our expenses as well. So I do want to say, I mean, Alfred is absolutely right. The partnership to be able to have the operating space that we have has been tremendous for us, especially in seasonal nature. But in other markets, we have seen cities go after capital grants to purchase equipment. So I mean, that might be an option if we look to expand the program. There are different funding opportunities. Federal funding is very tight right now for bike share, but there are some state-based programs that we have made use of in other markets. Right now, we're actually expanding our Santa Barbara program using a CMO grant, Clean Mobility Options Grant. That program has some limitations on it, but there's also, there's public funds even for operating dollars in some programs. Some of those are economic-based, though, and that might be, you have to be a designated low-income kind of community in order to be eligible, and I'm not sure if Truckee would meet that standard. So did that answer the questions?
Yes, thank you so much. And while you're up there, one last question.
Yeah.
If we did put out an RFP, would B-Cycle be a participant in that process?
Yeah, absolutely. We would definitely be interested in looking at the RFP and trying to figure out if we could make this work. I mean, we came into this uncertain what would happen when we put bike share on the ground in Truckee. I think we were very hopeful this could be an interesting model for us if we could find success here. There's a lot of communities like Truckee, although nothing quite like Truckee. I mean, I want to give credit where it is, but it might be an interesting approach for us to try and bring bike share to more kind of seasonal areas that have great bicycling infrastructure, kind of demand for that. At least what we've seen, which is not unique in bike share, is that it's very difficult to make programs sustainable on user revenue alone. So I mentioned our expenses. Our revenue on a per-bike basis is about $900 a bike. So we spend about $4,100 a bike, and we make about $900. So that's kind of that gap, you know? And what we find in any markets, even whether it's a big city market like Philadelphia, where we also operate, or whether it's a mid-sized community like Boulder or a smaller community, it always comes down to having a diverse portfolio of revenue. If you're just relying on user revenue, it's really not often enough to sustain the programs. So in other markets, we've been successful, you know, either with partnerships in Boulder. CU Boulder's going to give us about $1.2 million this year to provide 700,000 trips for CU Boulder students. In places like Philadelphia, they have digital advertising, which is really what's funded the expansion of that program and also provides ongoing operational subsidy as well as title sponsorship. So in each market, you really have to come up with that portfolio approach. I think what we have learned from Truckee is that it's a very supportive community of bike share. We've been able to run a very good operation, I would say, in terms of there haven't been challenges that we've seen in some other communities of things like theft or vandalism. We've been very fortunate that there's just been good care of the program, and we are seeing growing ridership. I mean, we're at, I think, .78 trips per bike per day, at least for the most recent month in July, and that's, that's on par with ridership that we're seeing in Nashville right now with our program, too. So it's been growing in its ridership. I think that there's still more opportunity for us to keep that momentum rolling. Unfortunately, the thought that we could run this as a for-profit, non-subsidized program, we've now closed up our third season, and we've been having operational losses in each of those years, and we're just not able to fund that ongoing. So that's kind of where we have been working with Alfred and come to you.
Nor would we expect you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is your current program done in association with any bike shops or other groups in Truckee? Are you operating completely on your own?
Yeah, so we are operating completely independently. I will say, when we first put together our RFP response, our assumption at that time was that we were actually going to work with a local bike shop, just given the size. The cost of getting a leased space would have been really intermountable, I think, for a program of that size. We did go through that process. I won't kind of specify the shop that we worked with. Once we got kind of the quotes for them, they were going to need to lease additional space, which we would have to cover. They were also going to need to purchase a service vehicle because they didn't have one, so that would have gone to us, and then they would have billed us the shop rates for all of the work. So it really became significantly more challenging, so we had to kind of redo the process and work with the town to figure out how we could run it effectively as a, as a system. And I will give credit to Sawyer, who's been with the program since launch. It's people, it's Sawyer specifically, who's been with the program every year and has come back. With it being a seasonal role, you really have to find staff that have that commitment and that expertise, and you can always learn bike share, but it's very helpful if you've been doing this, especially in the community, to understand how to do it efficiently and to really maintain a good service. So that's been helpful for us, too.
Has your company reached out to any of the biking groups in the region or visit Truckee Tahoe? You may not have had an opportunity just to.
Yeah. I personally have not been in recent communication. For our first two seasons of operation, we did have a dedicated general manager, and part of his role and responsibility was doing some outreach in different communication with those types of groups. I don't know exactly what conversations would have been had. One of the things we did as a efficiency kind of within this year is, the team that we have on the ground is very much, their focus is running the bike share service. Share service. We don't necessarily, we weren't necessarily seeing the ROI on having somebody in the market specifically trying to drive partnerships, just because we weren't seeing those materialize with, with the first couple of years of the program.
Okay. So Alfred, one, one of the things that concerns me is how this program could really increase four or fivefold. And, and part of it is I still can't, I'm having trouble understanding why residents are making such use of the program, only because I would think a resident had their own bike. So, um, so my question is, what, what are the, what would it take to increase this program four or fivefold in terms of usage?
Uh, I think it would, it would include getting in more into the neighborhoods where people do have direct access. I think that would be a big part of it. I think our regional partners also, if we could work with some of our regional partners over in the North Shore as well, people having that familiarity, knowing that they can go from one place to the next, whether or not even using the bike necessarily for transportation, but just to venture into Truckee and that would be their, their means to get around. We have seen a lot of people, and I've talked to people out in front of Town Hall that have come up to Truckee from Santa Cruz to Santa Barbara because they, they know that there is B Cycle and they've used it before. So I think, you know, that slow adoption has started to occur, but I think once we, we could get into those neighborhoods and also maybe have a little more input on the pricing structure too, would also be, I think, be beneficial as well. So.
Okay. And that would add cost. If reaching into other neighborhoods, then adds cost to it.
It would. They've, you know, they've honored the commitment in the RFP at the 100 stations and 50 bikes. But that, you know, with the, the loss in revenue and adding, losing $300, or $3,000 per bike isn't really attractive to add more bikes. So it would be something we would have to work on to, to get that expansion. We have moved stations around. I would like to call that out. We did move stations from Hennessy, which we had one over there, and we had a few other around that have been very, very, have been highly utilized when we have moved them around as well. So I think if we had an opportunity to look at more of the, where the activity centers are, including the neighborhoods and getting into those areas, we would see an increase in ridership and more of an adoption by our residential or residents as well.
Okay. And then you're also saying even operating at a loss, we're advancing a number of the town's policies.
We, yes, we are. And I think, you know, and I, you know, I kind of dork out at this stuff and I tell Jen that when I go downtown and, you know, just to see people that get off Tarte Connect and they walk over and grab an e-bike, or they look around and they look at Tarte Connect and it's 45 minutes and they want to jump on an e-bike, they know their trip's only down the street and it's five minutes. It's just, it's, it's awesome to have a system and options and alternatives. And that is what the general plan and the mobility element do envision.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have a couple of quick questions that came up since everybody. Brian, good to see you in person. I think you've always been on video with us for the past three years, right?
I believe we were cutting a ribbon together a couple of years ago. Yes, I've been on video. So really happy to be here as well.
Thanks for being here. So just a couple of quick things that I wanted to clarify that you kind of mentioned. Sorry, I don't know if that's my microphone or not. Thank you. 4,000 a year for maintenance. What's like, uh, what's the bike purchase price? Cause that, your, that was in your depreciation schedule, but that's a four-year depreciation?
It's a five-year depreciation. So if, if you were to go and the list price on a new e-bike through us is $2,700-ish. When you factor in some of the accessories, it's about $3,000 for the bike price. And then there's two docks for every one bike and each dock is about $1,900. So the, the per seat cost is roughly $6,000 per seat is how I think about it.
That's your fixed cost?
Yep. In Truckee, there's a few other auxiliary components we did do. So the wayfinding panels, and then in many of our locations have base plates. So that would be additional in that. But that's roughly where that equipment. I will say though, the equipment that you, that we have in, in Truckee, it's expensive equipment. I will acknowledge that. But it also lasts a long time. We've been running the program in Boulder for, it's going in its 15th year and it's the same stations on the ground. So the, the equipment that we put on the ground is really a high-quality product, really built to last. We make that investment, even, you know, with us financing. It, it's not stuff that, that works for a year or two or three and then you recycle it. It's really intended to be on the ground as a long-term program.
That was actually going to be my next question, which is what, whose equipment is it right now? Is it your equipment and we lease it?
There's no, there's no funding that comes from, it's, we, we operate, we, we finance the installation and the operation of it. So we're covering the full financial cost less the in-kind partnership from the space that we use with the town for operations.
And I know in Alfred's staff report, and I think you just referred to it, but obviously sponsorship opportunities, like you can throw a wrap on those bikes, you can have a docking station, docking station sponsored by blah, blah, blah. Like that's all in your wheelhouse and you guys manage, you guys manage that and other jurisdictions? Or is the jurisdiction manage that? Or like, what's that look like?
It's a blend. So I would say in Philadelphia, where if you go to Philadelphia, it's a B Cycle system, but it's called Indigo and it's sponsored by Independence Blue Cross Blue Shield. That sponsorship was actually brokered initially, Mayor Nutter was involved in bringing them together. And it's been an incredible sponsorship that's continued to grow. Those types of sponsorships are hard for us as, as the operator to, to bring in. We certainly go after them and we've had some success in, in some situations, but oftentimes, you know, there's more success working with.
Yeah. So maybe I guess the question is better rephrased. So in that sort of scenario, potentially the town would be the one soliciting sponsorships potentially, but you guys would actually execute on whatever.
The branding or the partnerships.
I guess that's what I was getting at. Yeah. Okay.
And I would say that, um, you know, it's, yes, it's our system, but it's really the community system. And if there is a sponsorship, you know, consideration, we are very flexible in figuring out what's important to the town and how we can really bring this program to life in a way that reflects the values and, and things that are important. Things like station placement, things like, you know, maybe we were here learning about homeless resources or unhoused resources, you know, B Cycle pass for transportation. And there might be other groups of residents that would be a great, you know, case for that. I think we are very open, specifically in giving access. And we, in many of the markets, we, we run really recognized equity-based programs. Philadelphia is one of the leading equity-based Bike Share programs in the country and that's, bike transit started with the launch of that program. That's really in our kind of DNA of, of running programs.
And I guess that leads me into my exact last question, which is, um, what I, when you were using that example of CU Boulder, is that Boulder buying rides, like pre-buying rides for students or teachers or whatever it is they're doing? And so it's a form of sponsorship, it's a form of subsidy, whatever it is, it's dollars coming, it's revenue at the end of the day. So is that, that's something easily done? For example, like the hospital district or whatever wants to buy $10,000 worth of rides and use it as employee incentives or something like that? Those are, those are just codes basically that people are going to use? And that's yet another just opportunity for revenue in that sense, basically? Is that kind of what you were explaining there? Like, it's not necessarily just the general person, like grabbing the bike and going at a market rate. It's, it's potentially broader revenue streams that sort of guarantee an amount?
The guarantee is important, I think. I think there's a certain, um, you know, if you're, if you're earning each trip, you, you know, you can't really count on each trip happening. There's a lot that can depend on that. But if you're working with partners, it also, it isn't just the, the commitment of the trips. I think it's also the, the partner's outreach that they bring, you know, and it's much more meaningful if you're getting something from your employer as a benefit than if we're trying to sell you a discounted pass. You don't know who we are necessarily, but it's an employee benefit. I think there's a, just kind of, you're hearing it from different messages. I think there's, and then also it's something you want to take advantage of as an employee and, and might be more inclined to, to sign up then too.
And definite shout out to your crew over here. They're, they are awesome and they're well-seen around town. So good job, you guys. Yeah. Thank you. No further questions.
Okay. I want to piggyback on Councilmember Polavy's questions, but direct them to staff. Have you had time to explore partnerships or sponsorships or branding, maybe with the other jurisdictions, like having the airport board subsidize a station at, at the airport?
I, I have informally and we've talked to VTT and talked to the hospital even more so recently. You know, our position kind of throughout the pilot is kind of been a little bit of hands-off just because of the way the, the RFP and the proposal was from B Cycle. But based on the direction tonight, however that may go, we can, we could ramp that up and start those conversations a little bit more in earnest.
Okay. So potentially there are subscription services, whether with the school district or a large employer or the hospital?
Sorry about that. I think what would be helpful, the staff's recommendation is to work on a funding plan if you're interested in supporting the subsidy in some way that, you know, we don't have a lot of branded items throughout town. So it would be helpful to know if you're supportive of that. We can explore that as part of the, the funding option. And when I say branded, I mean, you know, whether it's another agency that's going to label up materials. We just, it's kind of a new lane for us. We don't necessarily think there's anything wrong with that, but it would be helpful to know like how, what degree you're willing to go for us to kind of go back and work through funding opportunities if that's the direction of council. We have had left messages and had preliminary conversations to gauge interest, but we haven't gotten good feedback on that yet. But we also haven't really fully explored, you could brand a station or bikes, or it could be used as advertising. So we could, we could certainly do that.
Does the Truckee branding program have a budget? Where does all this stuff come from?
When I say branding, I mean, like if VTT wanted to brand something, we, we started to explore that with Tarte Connect.
Use our logo everywhere. Come on.
We do have a community engagement budget, but that would be separate.
That's what I was referring to. Thank you.
Well.
Yeah, go ahead.
I do think if we're going to subsidize this, we certainly could put some Town of Truckee stickers on these things.
Okay. Let's, let's move on. Can we move on to public comment? Let's, let's do that. Is there any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, let's bring it back for, thank you. Let's bring it back for council deliberation, starting with Councilmember Romek.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you for coming here. Good to see you two years later. Um, yeah, really appreciate this. I think having Bike Share in our town is important to continue with our transit future, our transportation future and providing different options. And Alfred, I, I appreciate, you know, showing the usage and we are seeing upticks every year. So it does seem like something we should continue. I think oftentimes transit, transportation services are subsidized. They don't run off user fees. And so having to think about that for this Bike Share is not out of the ordinary when we're thinking about how are we moving people around the town? So I'm, I'm definitely supportive of looking at ways to continue this. And, you know, I'd be comfortable moving forward with staff's direction to do an RFP, but also look for ways to fund the program through 2026. I think there are ample opportunities for sponsorships as we just discussed. I know VTT, they submitted a letter of support and we could market it. And I know they have T-Bid dollars too. So, you know, how could we, you know, tap into that? The airport district, hospital, rec district, you know, as I asked, we see people are already going into Placer County and going into the North Star Village. So the opportunity to expand into Placer County, I think, is definitely worth looking at that partnership and then talking with resort partners of, you know, sponsorships and, and those opportunities too. I know Palisades and North Star, even in the summer, they often have incentives for their employees to get to work. So maybe that's an opportunity for them to do some of these models. So, um, definitely in support of staff's recommendations, you know, I, I would just add Jen to your question, like we do want to be tasteful. I, I wouldn't intend this to be, all of the sudden our docks are all bright red and have weird logos on them. But I think in working through the variety of partners, we can find opportunities to be able to have sponsorships and those folks get return on their investments as well. And then last comment, just Mayor, you know, you mentioned, it's funny that residents use these when they have their own bikes. And just again, I still don't have an e-bike, you know, so I am a resident that this is nice occasionally. I don't use it very frequently, but when it is, yeah, I want to get down there. And that's happened exactly what Alfred said. Tarte Connect is going to be 50 minutes. So I'll pick up a bike and ride downtown instead. So I think again, having these multiple mobility options is just so important to meet all of our goals on a multitude of goals that we see up on the wall. So those are my thoughts.
Councilmember Polavy.
Yeah, I think I basically generally agree with everything that you said. Um, I, I see people, I live on Glen Shire Drive. I literally see people walking down Glen Shire Drive with their helmet in their hand, walking to the trailhead. So that's like one huge real-life example that I see on a very regular basis. And I was downtown at my store today and two of the J1 Coffee Bar employees are, are also riding by, by on their, on their B Cycle bikes. So, um, you know, this is definitely something I do think we, I agree we should continue. I think it does provide a great option. I'm not necessarily opposed to sponsorship, but I'm more aligned with the example that I think Brian gave on the Boulder example where, you know, getting some institutional and/or business, sort of like prepaid ticket, I don't know what we would call them, prepaid ride cards or whatever we did when we launched and you guys were like, go try it out. And you gave us those like prepaid promotional types of cards. I, to me, that's maybe just a better model because I think it takes us out of the selling and sponsorship game, which I'm not really sure is our wheelhouse in that sense. So that makes me a little concerned just of, of how we sort of roll that out. All of a sudden we got like town sponsorship of stuff. So I would be careful more there and, and err more on the other side. And, and I think that still provides opportunities, whether it's our hospital district, whether it is VTT providing it to the hotels, right? So we have visitors able to use it. And it doesn't have to be necessarily branded up and stickered and wrapped and all glossy and, you know, costs extra time and money. It could, it could maybe be done in other ways. And I would also say, you know, I'm not going to use the word subsidy because I don't think it ac, it accurately characterizes, you know, our entire Tarte Connect service. I mean, our entire Tarte Connect service is paid for with general fund dollars at the end of the day. So if this is paid for with general fund dollars, I'm not sure. I look at it, you know, as a subsidy or as this lost leader, it's just something that municipalities do to support their transit systems is you got to pay for it. And we give free bus rides out, so why shouldn't we give free bike rides out? I don't know. That's kind of how I think of it. So take it from there.
Okay. Um, I expected a deficit. I was shocked by the size of the deficit. And I do have concerns about our being able to increase the ridership to close the deficit. So I, I am more interested in looking for additional sources of revenue, whether it's sponsorships or what have you. Subsidy is not a dirty word for me, so I'm comfortable using it. I would like to try and reduce the subsidy. And I guess the last thing for me that's kind of a concern is while we have more residential riders than we might have anticipated, there's still a certain amount of ridership that is tourist-based or entirely recreational. And so it makes me think in some manner, we should be looking for assistance from VTT, Visit Truckee Tahoe, or the Trails Foundation. I think it'd just be great to have them included. So it's more of a, a more widespread base of support than just the town and the provider. All of that said, I'm, with those caveats, I'm.
Can I just put something on the record really quickly?
Go ahead.
So you know that 12% of the transit occupancy tax flows to the Town of Truckee's general fund and VTT gets 1.25%? Okay. I'm just being really clear because I, I'm not sure I always characterize like asking VTT for something when the town's already got 12% of that something and VTT's only got 1.25%? Just think about, right? Like as we talk about these things moving forward, I think it's important to recognize that a lot of that tourism-based tax dollars is, is already coming into the town via sales tax and a much larger portion of transit occupancy tax, just to be clear.
It's a tax. That's why it comes to the town.
Yep.
Okay. Um, I think they might just be interested in wanting to help. Okay. I think they might just be interested in wanting to help. This could be attractive to them. So do we have a motion?
I would love to contribute to this conversation.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, I agree with everything, I think. And ultimately, we'll make the recommendation to move forward with this. My few little contributions are that, yeah, I see this as part of our transit system. I would like us to operate it more as such. I think it gives a lot of opportunities, yes, for our community and our visitors to test ride e-bikes as we see by the survey results. That was 23% of the respondents saying that's why they took the ride. To me, that's a huge success just in that. Because that says to me, people are interested in potentially doing a mode shift. And we want that in our community and we want to support that. And that is something that is in our goals. And so if this system at 23% of the respondents is serving that, that alone is a huge reason to continue this program and financially support it. I agree. I think we have a lot of opportunities with our partner agencies and our large employers to, I think, especially this subscription model. I didn't even think about that, but I think it's brilliant. It's a great employee benefit and we could go a long way with that. But I also would really love to see us, maybe at the very least, if not reduce the pricing overall, just to, you know, lower that barrier to, to try this or use it more often. Maybe at the very least to lower the cost of the, because there's a monthly package, right? That we really could market to our residents as an alternative. They don't have to own their own bike. They don't have to maintain it. They don't have to charge it. They can just jump on these and do their errands around town. You know, my favorite way to use this is to go downtown for dinner because I hate looking for parking. And sometimes TART Connect, you know, is a long wait out in Glen, out in, in Donner Lake. But the bike station's right there. So those are my thoughts on this. I think just creating that opportunity for people to consider mode shifting is the huge success story. And I want to underscore that. So with that, if everybody is okay, I'm willing to make a motion.
Okay. I just wanted to say before we go to the motion, I think bottom line, what you're hearing is a unanimous interest in seeing the program continue. And now we'll test it with a motion.
All right. So I move that we direct staff to issue a new request for proposals, RFP, for e-bike share in the Town of Truckee beyond 2026. And for the 20, direct staff to develop and return to council with a funding plan to continue the B-cycle e-bike share program through the 2026 season.
I'll second.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Passes unanimously. Let's move on to, I think this is the last item, item 7.3, which is the, oh, the fees, our new, new fees, fee update.
Honorable Mayor and council members, we're pleased to present the annual fee schedule update for calendar year 2026. This is just the legal jargon about what we are doing and the, the legal basis for the actions that we're taking. And essentially, Count, in Truckee Council has set a policy to recover the full cost of services provided to the public. This was affirmed in 2007 and has been reaffirmed each year with the adoption of the fee schedule. And then we increased the fees on an annual basis by the CPI to avoid a substantial fee increase at any one time. The inflationary index for this upcoming period, we, that we use is 2.7%. And that is the Consumer Price Index for the San Francisco, Oakland, San Jose area from February 2024 to February 2025. This is just where we got that number, which is from the Bureau of Labor Statistics. Some notable changes in animal services, we are embarking to increase the dog license fee for neutered dogs to better reflect the true cost of operating the animal control program. We have not increased that fee in a very, very long time. We are also adding two late penalty fees for dog license, we're adding one late penalty fee for dog licenses and also added two late fees to the fee schedule to address late payments for administrative citations. In code compliance, we also added two late fees for administrative citation payments received after the due date to help encourage on-time payment. In community development, we are updating the minor modification deposit fee to $1,250 for consistency with the current zoning clearance deposit fee. As a reminder, for, for work that we take in a deposit, we charge the actual cost of doing it. We track each staff hour spent. We charge the actual staff time to that, to that deposit. And if there's anything remaining at the end, the amounts are returned to the applicant. We do try and charge enough at the beginning so that we are covering it. So we're not having to stop work mid, mid-project to collect additional funds to continue funding the work. And then we're also adding a new fee. We're breaking apart the sign plan. So there's sign plan, single tenant, and then there's sign plan, multiple tenants. And this will be a deposit of $1,000. In police, we added two late fees to the fee schedule for administrative citations received after the due date. You'll see that frequently. These are not new fees. We are just adding visibility by placing them onto the fee schedule with, you know, more, more consistency so that they're highly visible. So people know, you don't pay, it's going to get more expensive. Please pay your, please pay your fines on time. And housing, there are, is a new fee to refinance and resale for deed restriction, restricted properties in new housing developments. We are removing the loan for existing unpermitted ADU, JDU, as this loan doesn't exist anymore. And we're also reducing the THAP annual leasing fee. That fee has never been collected. It was on our fee schedule. And as we've gotten more experience with the housing program, we realized that the work associated with that fee is, isn't as robust as we initially anticipated. So we're able to reduce that fee. And in parking, we are increasing the parking in bike lane or on multi-use path fee, which is also a new name from $30 to $150. And this was a, as a recommendation from the Donner Lake Safety Meeting that occurred in July. In short-term rentals, we revised the fees, separating out the annual fire fee from the registration and annual renewal fee. The Truckee Fire District is going to start collecting their portion on their own. And then we also revised the registration and annual renewal fee based on the current costs to operate that program. And in solid waste, we added an $8 delinquent account administrative fee. The town was absorbing the cost to add the delinquent account, delinquent costs onto the property tax, but there is an actual dollar amount associated for each property that we have to put, we have to add a fee to. And then there's also the staff time in calculating. So it's a nominal fee, but when you have like 100 delinquent properties, it can start to add up. If approved, the fees would become effective November 1st. That is to try and get ahead of the building season so that builders are not having to change their fees mid-building cycle. So they start gearing up for building season in the winter and then building season starts during the summer. So that's kind of the idea behind that odd date. And with that, I'll open it up for any questions. Otherwise, the recommendation is on, on the computer.
Thank you, Nikki. I will start with Councilmember Polavy. Questions? Councilmember Romack, Vice Mayor Clove-Stud.
No, I just want to thank my fellow council members for their great, great questions ahead of time and staff for the responses. It's very informative.
I want to echo Vice Mayor's comments. Thank you very much for the responses. Those, those were very helpful and explanatory. I learned a lot about our parking fee structure and what we're trying to do on parking over the following years, as well as understanding a lot more about how our building code fee structure works in regard to unpermitted work. So I don't have any questions either. Let's go to any public comments. Are there any public comments on a fee structure that would raise fees in the Town of Truckee? Do we not have any comments? Okay, Spurliket.
I was inspired by the way you phrase that. My name is David Diamond. I just wanted to say there wasn't that long ago that we were in this room and we were listening to residents of Donner Lake talking about safety issues from speeding and people pulling out of parking spots and parking in the wrong places. And I feel like that was not long ago. And they did ask for, for that recommendation that the parking fine be increased. And here we are. And you've done that. That was responsive. And I just, if they're listening, I just hope that they recognize that was fast action and it was based on community input. So I applaud you for it.
Thank you, Mr. Diamond.
I should mention that any fees that are related to development activities, so that would be like the building fees, they have to have 60 days before they become active, which is why we can't do it any sooner than November 1st. This is like the, we have to have at least 60 days. So just to echo on that, that, that fine amount.
And to that end, we received a comment from Ed Vento on this as well.
Michelle Anderson, I live at the west end of Donner Lake. I ride my bike along Donner Lake. I spend a lot of time on that road. And I'm very, very grateful that you've raised the fee. It could be $300 as far as I'm concerned.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, let's bring it back to council for deliberation. Where shall we begin? Councilmember Romack?
Yeah, I was just going to highlight that. So thank you for highlighting that. I think this is a great step and hopefully residents and people recreating at Donner Lake hopefully see a difference. And with that, I would make a motion if we're all good with that, unless anyone else had any comments. I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2025-51 approving inflationary adjustment additions, modifications, and corrections to the townwide fee schedule and charges for town services.
And I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. None opposed. Passes unanimously. And at 6:24, that, that leaves us with only council reports. So let's go to Councilmember Polavy.
I'll just use my council member report to maybe bring up an opportunity related to the homeless advisory committee, specifically the Veterans Hall, and see if there's either support for us drafting up a resolution of some sort to go to Parks and Rec District regarding use of the Veterans Hall as, you know, maybe one of the final places that is existing to support the homeless services that we've talked about for the last couple of years. So.
So bringing back to the council an agenda item for a resolution? Is that what you're floating?
Yeah. Yep, precisely. You know, if that's something that the THAC, I would put it back to the THAC to say, hey, we're looking for that direction. But from my conversations, both with members of the THAC, with Supervisor Bullock, with a number of other folks in the community, for a short-term solution that is the, seems to be, from all of my conversations, and I'm happy to be corrected, the lowest hanging fruit for a facility in the near term. And we're just batting this issue around. I mean, at some point, we have to do something. And to me, that's at least a first step. They could say no, they don't even have to entertain it. They don't even have to read it. But at least we've, you know, put something forward in terms of finding a location at this point.
Just so I understand, is this a message to THAC you're making now? Or are you asking?
I mean, I'm asking us if, if you are interested, if we have support for three people to actually put a resolution forward that does that. That says, hey, if this community wants a warming center in any way, shape, or form to happen this winter, the Veterans Hall is the most likely place that it is going to happen.
Okay. I think all we could do now is just put it on the calendar. If we get three votes, we just put it on the agenda.
Right. I mean, really, the council, what, you can't discuss the merits of the idea. But what you can do is talk about whether you would like to bring it forward. It's not a commitment to voting in a particular way. It's just, are you interested in at least discussing it?
Yes. So councilmembers, Polavy's raised it. What are the thoughts of the, our other council members?
I, I don't feel strongly to, to have that discussion. So that's where I'm at.
I am also, I, very similarly, I don't, not our facility. So, and we can't discuss our, the benefits of this. I am concerned about redirecting the focus of the THAC to the, to a council meeting. So I'm lukewarm to the idea.
And doing it through a council discussion leaves me lukewarm. I, I think that is something that will be, continued to be discussed at THAC. And I think they'll hear you loud and clear on that as well. I'm just going to say thank you for bringing it up.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. Councilmember Romack.
Sure. For council member reports, there was the downtown ped and bike crossing committee that met on August 13th, after, right after our last council meeting. And again, to the community and fellow council members, this is the committee that was looking at the potential of a railroad crossing, an additional railroad crossing in downtown, either over, under, or at grade. And this committee, this was the third meeting. I believe a report and feasibility analysis is going to come back to council from the grant funding that we had. But a great discussion, I think, just another good committee. There was live mentimeter voting. And I think it was favored by those in the room, which I think there was only 10 or 11 of us. But to continue the conversation around the potential for it, some strong voices feeling like we shouldn't. But again, a consensus in the room that should at least continue to look at it. But again, I think we're going to hear more from the committee, but just great process. Then AYSO soccer season started. I'm a new six U soccer coach, so watch out. Super fun to do. And then also just good luck to everybody who's starting school tomorrow in TTUSD. I know it's a big, exciting day. Hopefully you're not watching TV right now and you're going to sleep soon.
Vice Mayor Clove-Stud.
Yeah, maybe not TV.
Thanks for that recap on the crossing. I worked with Climate Transformation Alliance Group on some strategic planning or our strategic update session that we're planning and attended Good Morning Truckee. That's about it.
I met with Brian Frickson, who's the project manager for Pacific Crest Commons at the project site to see the progress on Pacific Crest, Pacific Crest Commons, attended the Housing Horizons Community Workshop at Joan Jones House. And, and then Councilmember Polavy tag teamed with me as I was leaving and carried on, I'm sure, the good work of the council at the, at that event. I've attended a number of THAC meetings, private and the public meeting, since the last council meeting. And then Anna and I attended the Good Morning Truckee event where Taylor Adams, the Economic Development Authority of Western Nevada CEO spoke. And it was a very interesting presentation on economic development in Western Nevada. Among the things that could be of interest to us is that 80% of the new jobs in Western Nevada are with existing employers. Nevada are with existing employers. And he was emphasizing to attract new business, he really needed to make sure that your existing businesses were, in so many words, happy. Now Anna asked what Western Nevada was going to do about the source of energy for all this expansion, business expansion. And one of the interesting responses we all received was that Western Nevada is asking for only $1 billion from the World Bank to do further development of wind and solar energy, which is thinking big. They hope to generate 800 watts and they'll, and Western Nevada will hear within the next couple of weeks. What's that? Yeah, 800 megawatts. And then Tony Lashbrook asked about water. And yes, water's always of interest to us. And essentially the response was if the curve stays at the current gradient, they believe they have enough water. If demand increases, raises the curve, they're in a lot of trouble. And then I asked about what he had to say about economic diversification for Truckee. I thought he's going to give us all kinds of great ideas about diversification. He said, you got to lean in on what you do well already. So, and then I went to the mayor manager's breakfast with our manager down in Gress Valley. And that's it. It's eight, oh, shoot, I took us over past 6:30. I'm sorry. Okay. Meeting's adjourned.